I now call this meeting to order. In accordance with the State Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on June 20th, 2013, to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. May I have a roll call? Mr. Mahmoud.
Sure. Ms. Bogushevsky.
Here.
Ms. Santiponte.
Here.
Mr. Gillette.
Yes.
Mrs. Haas.
Yes, here.
Mrs. Haley.
Here.
Mrs. Ley.
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer.
Here.
Ms. Wasson.
Here.
And Mr. Kent.
Yes.
Madam President, we have a call.
Thank you. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset and the State of New Jersey as follows. A) The matters to be discussed are negotiations with the Hillsborough Education Association and the Hillsborough Principals and Supervisors Association. B) The matters discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. May I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, we're in executive session. And actually, we don't have to leave this room. We're not quite ready. Okay, now we're ready for the public session of our meeting of June 24th of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education. May I have another roll call, please?
Surely, Mrs. Haas. Ms. Bogushevsky.
Here.
Ms. Santiponte.
Here.
Mr. Gillette.
Yes.
Mrs. Haas.
Here.
Mrs. Haley.
Here.
Mrs. Ley.
Here.
Mr. Pulsifer. Ms. Wasson.
Here.
And Mr. Kent. Have a call.
Thank you very much. May we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is correspondence, and I'd like to recognize that we've received correspondence from Kelly Ward, Stephen Tindall, Andrea Singler, Tara Romano, Charlotte Tindall, Jane Stats, Caroline Quadreno, and Tom McKeon. At this point, we will go to Dr. Schiff for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. It's my pleasure to share with the board and the public our spring athletic season wrap-up. Our athletic director shared with me plenty of good news about our students. First, the girls' varsity softball team was the Delaware East and NJ SIAA Central Group Four Sectional Champions. Congratulations to Allison Shimko, who was chosen as the Courier-News Player of the Year. Congratulations to our softball team and Allison. Jack Paganos earned third place in the NJ SIAA North Jersey Group Four Sectionals and placed sixth in the NJ SIAA Meet of Champions in golf. Congratulations to Jack. Our girls' track team placed second in the county relays, Skyland Relays, and Somerset County Championships. They also earned first place in the Central Jersey Group Four State Championships. Eight girls competed at the Meet of Champions. Congratulations to our girls' track team. Our boys' volleyball team was Skyland Cup and Skyland Conference champs. Tim Erdman was named First Team All-State by the Star Ledger, and Joe DeLuca was named Player of the Year by the Courier-News Tribune. Congratulations to Tim and Joe and our volleyball team. And that's our athletics spring wrap-up. Just to mention to the board that Triangle Elementary School celebrated its 50th birthday. Wonderful event over there. They do such great work. Big celebration. We also had a wonderful celebration this past Thursday, celebrating our 2013 graduates. Close to 600 students graduated that evening. It was an absolutely wonderful event. Congratulations also goes out to all of our high school administration, in particular our principal, Ms. Karen Bingert, for doing a phenomenal job with her graduates. Congratulations once again to the class of 2013. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. We now move on to the approval of minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of June 10th, 2013, executive session?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain. Okay.
Me as well.
Dean abstain.
And Lorraine as well.
And Lorraine.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion for the June 10th, 2013, regular meeting?
So moved.
Thank you. Nothing like a little enthusiasm, Mr. Gillette.
I want to jump in because I know.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
Abstentions? Dean and Lorraine?
Gotcha.
Okay. We move on to the public input on the district self-assessment under the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act. Yet another unfunded mandate that we need to address, and our Assistant Superintendent for Personnel, Guy Whitlock, will be giving that report.
I'm not going to bend down, so I'm going to project. So I don't know how well you can see that up there. Maybe we'll be able to make it a little bit larger. But before I go into that, what this report is, and what we're doing tonight with this report, is the state has instituted a self-assessment that districts all across the state are using to assess how they've been performing and implementing the rules and regulations under the HIB law, which came into effect two years ago. We've just finished up our second year of implementation. So before referring to that, what you see up on the screen there, I want to point out that in 2011, 2012, which was the first year of the implementation of the HIB laws, we, Hillsborough, had 52 confirmed HIB events. This current year, 2012, 2013, Hillsborough has nine confirmed HIB events. So a radical difference. Hillsborough High School went from 26 last year to zero this year. So one of the reasons why the numbers have gone down is because there's a better understanding of the law and what it actually entails. And this is, but the HIB laws are a bias offense, so not every bad behavior that we grew up with as children, and we called bullying now as a lowercase "b," but we have a statutory uppercase "B" representing bullying under the statute. So we've done extraordinarily well as a district, outstanding as a matter of fact. So we can use this assessment to identify many of the reasons that we have done so well. The other good thing about the assessment, and by the way, unlike what our teachers do, we received this rubric maybe a month ago. So it's not like we had this rubric and this was the target that we were aiming for, but certainly it is a formative assessment for us and for all the other districts in the state. Because now that we have this rubric, we have broken out and identified various elements where we can be even stronger. So if you see, going across the top, we have the schools listed, and then there are eight core elements that constitute the grade, the grade book or the report card. Standard number one, HIB programs, approaches, or other initiatives. Number two, training on the BOE-approved HIB policy. Number three, other staff instruction and training programs. Number four, curriculum and instruction on HIB and related information and skills. Number five, personnel. Number six, school-level HIB incident reporting procedure. Seven, HIB investigation procedure. Eight, HIB reporting. If you, if Dr. Schiff can scroll a little bit so that we can see the last column that's just being chopped off. Just a little bit more. Okay. And what those columns represent, the one that begins with the number 15, which you'll see in a hot second, that is the total possible points under the rubric that a school could get. And the next column, where you see the number 10, is the total needed to meet all requirements. So total possible points is if, it was pretty much an A-plus, exceeding the requirements, and total needed is what you needed to be in accord with the requirement. So you can see that we've done very well. One school is below that 10, and a lesson learned there, again having the benefit of the rubric, is that some of the schools, and Orton Road is one of them, actually lost points because there was not a law enforcement person that was involved with their meetings. And so one of the lessons learned that we have since each school had an opportunity, and this again is a self-assessment, so the anti-bullying specialists along with the administrators in the building filled these out, went through, and submitted it. And then we had an opportunity on a district level for the ABS folks to come in and meet with me and to share with one another, which was fabulous. And this has really helped inform how we will move forward next year, because even though our numbers are great, we want them to be even better. And the Anti-Bullying Act is not just against anti-bullying. It's about really character education and also eliminating bad behavior that doesn't rise to the level of HIB, but we want to eliminate that as well. So for instance, Karen Bingert has an SRO at the high school, so immediately we know going forward that when we have an initial meeting where we all come together in the fall, he will be in attendance, and then every school will have met that requirement as we move forward, planning ahead. And actually, on number three, you see Orton Road has a 9, and I discovered earlier today that they actually made an internal mistake in their map. That should be a 10, and they have the backup that shows that it is actually a 10, which would turn the bottom, the total 53 on the bottom, to 54. It still, it doesn't impact our district grade of 62. I find it interesting that everybody did this independently. It truly was a self-assessment, and I find it really interesting that the exemplar or the model that the state sent out for us to understand how to do this actually had a district score of 62, which we do have, and we can do better and we will do better. But as you see, you can look down the columns and you can see that in many, many instances, we far exceeded the base meets requirement, and in some cases were right at meets requirement, and then like the couple that I pointed out to you fell below. But overall, if you look to the bottom, the total score for each school, all schools exceeded the overall total needed, which was 50. So if there are any questions, and...
Are there any questions from the public on the HIB report? I would just like to say that the takeaway on this, which is very good, is that every single one of our schools met or exceeded the requirements, and that we're like, as a district, we're like halfway between the total needed to meet all requirements and the total possible. So that gives us very good compliance, but it also, as with everything, gives us some room for improvement. So it's a very good report, and I thank you for giving that to us tonight. Thank you. All righty. We are up to new business. Is there any new business from the board? Any new business from the public? Okay, moving right along. We're looking for now comments from the board or public regarding the action agenda. I'll start with the public this time. Any comments on the agenda from the public? No? Okay. Any comments from the board, or shall we just do it when we get to the items? Good. Okay. Committee reports. Who wants to go last?
(laughing)
Then you get to go. You can start. Greg, for operations.
All right. Thank you. Madam President, as I heard Dr. Schiff say a few minutes ago. So the operations committee met just a few days ago, on June 19th. We had a very full plate, and so I'm going to refer to my notes today more than I usually As we informed the board, as I informed the board a few weeks ago, we, the operations committee had determined that we would seek to begin the RFQ process for a new, or just to say, a district architect of record. So we had that process, and we had, I think, five, if I recall correctly, five firms submitted RFQ. The administration gave us some notes on those five firms. We, operations committee, determined to call three firms in for interviews in front of us on June 19th, and after the interviews, I'm happy to report that operations committee is recommending that we choose Peret Samjen as our new architect of record, beginning, I think, July 1st. Now, there will be some overlap with the current architect of record, SSP. There'll be some overlap because SSP is already involved with several projects that they will need to work on over the summer. Anything new going forward will be dealt with by Peret Samjen. If you approve it tonight, it's on tonight's agenda. And if you're interested in board members, especially if you're interested in the details of that interview process, Kate made some very good notes, which were in the minutes, which you can take a look at. Okay. We also had, we also met at our meeting with Kathy Major. She's our manager for Sedexo of our food services. She just was there to report to us the automatic contract renewal, which includes an automatic fee increase of 2%. The good news in the food services renewal this year is there will be no increases in student lunch costs, which is good, because we struggle with this every year. We're recharged at the very low end of the allowable costs for school lunches. There's the federal guidelines for how much you're allowed to charge, and we're actually always nipping at the heels of the low end. In fact, we've had, you know, in the past, our attorney take a look at it to see how low can you go, like you're doing limbo here. We're really cutting it low, which is good. I like that. But she had some interesting comments, not exactly related to renewal. She talked about the challenges this year in implementing the federal nutrition plan. It was very difficult. She had some anecdotes about the bagels. They had a whole wheat bagel. Nobody liked the bagel. They were finally able to find a vendor who had a half decent bagel, that some kids bought the bagel. But she did say that, which was interesting to me, is that this year, and this was, this is in your notes too, this year approximately 450 students that normally would have bought meals every day, like the traditional school lunch, I'm buying the full meal, so we have 450 less this year than we've had in years past buy the meal. That's quite a large number. Of course, that doesn't mean they didn't buy anything. They increased their à la carte items and other things like that. So kids were still buying some things, which is good, because now we didn't have to raise our school lunch prices. Somewhat problematic, I'd rather the kids buy the acceptable nutritious meal, but they didn't like it, so. Call Washington, I guess, I don't know. 450 kids at least every day are not buying the meal. Everything else is status quo on that, though. The other item we talked about was two projects this year. They were paving projects at the Triangle Elementary School and the Amsterdam Elementary School. They've had some bumps in the road, or in the parking lot, I should say, bumps in the parking lot on those projects. One is that the, and I'll, just let me talk about the Amsterdam School now. The Amsterdam School, of course, anything done within, I don't know, almost anywhere in Hillsborough, any projects to do with impervious surface, come under the jurisdiction, apparently, of the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission. And they had some comments, or some strong comments, on our very simple, really, plans to improve the drainage at Amsterdam School. It was not adding impervious surface, as you recall, it was just improving the way the water flows in that parking lot, a project that needed to be done because there are some icy and dangerous conditions in the winter and some wet conditions at other times. But they had some suggestions, including a big retention basin on the property, some things like this that are not really feasible for what we're going to do. We're going to ask for a waiver. Of course, there's a problem with this commission, they only meet once a month, and then after they meet, they need the 30 days after that to decide what you just told them. So this is going to be dicey about whether or not this gets done this year. The takeaway from that is that if they don't agree and grant us the waiver at their next meeting, which is, I guess, the end of this week possibly, and if it goes another month after that, we're almost at, we're almost out of time for this year. So I'll keep you updated, and we'll talk about that the next meeting, I'm sure. We also had in Joel Handler, who is the Director of Technology for the district, and one of the things, one of the great things we've had done over the couple, last couple of years, is we've had, we've increased our wireless capabilities throughout the district and all, in the classrooms, basically. But the problem is that, the problem comes in here, is that with so many students now using the wireless and so many class activities, necessitating full streaming video to possibly 25 or 30 kids all at once, the wireless bogs down. There's not enough, I think you said the pipe isn't big enough or something? That's like a, not a literal, this is like the data pipe is not big enough. So here's how he can fix it. He could spend $230,000 to fix it, to have a different wireless access points in the classrooms. It's the only solution. He's been looking into this for, I guess, quite a long time now, because this problem didn't just come up this week. I think they've been just experiencing this problem the entire school year. So how can we pay for that? Well, we're just about at the end of our lease purchase on all of the projectors in the classrooms. That, those, that purchase is costing us something like $400,000 a year. What we can do is, when that lease purchase is finished, we won't have, we'll have that $400,000 in that year to pay for that, so we'll be able to, we'll have the $230,000 at that point. I know you're probably going to have questions, but let me just do one more. And the last thing that I'd like to talk about is that we're also, as well as the RFQ for the architect, we also went out to bid, we're going out to bid this year for our maintenance services, is that what it's called? Maintenance services contract. Aramark now has the contract to supervisory capacity over our maintenance and custodial staff, and also we purchased our supplies and equipment for maintenance and custodial through Aramark. We went out to bid. The bid is a little bit delayed for various reasons. We need to extend the time until we get the bids back and reviewed. So Aramark's contract would end June 30th. We're asking, I think that's on tonight's agenda, is that correct? We're asking to extend their contract until September 15th, so we'll have enough time to do the bid process and get that done. And that's about all I'm going to talk about. If there might be a few minor arms, you could take a look at in the minutes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gillette, Mrs. Ley, would you like to give the Education Committee report?
The Education Committee met on June 13th, and so I'm going to focus on the action items that you'll see in tonight's for approval. So the committee recommends to the full board the textbooks listed in A5, and as well the high school's Common Summer Reading Book, the last lecture that is listed in A6. And I hope everyone enjoys that book. It was wonderful to read that. And then we also reviewed and recommend six regulations related to special education and attendance that require full board approval for first reading as listed in A15. Then the committee also reviewed Policy and Regulation 5331, which is the Management of Life-Threatening Allergies in Schools. So for that presentation, Mrs. Lorraine Borick came. She's a supervisor of nursing, and she discussed the policy and regulation with us and pointed out that there was room for interpretation within the policy. So after lengthy discussion, the committee had several action items. We had discussed how principals needed flexibility during school celebrations in their schools to provide inclusion and safety for all students. Therefore, we recommended that administration continue discussions with the leadership team, the principals of the elementary schools, to consider options such as having monthly celebrations in the same way that they have for summer birthdays, so all consolidated into June. That will cut down on the number of celebrations. And also to celebrate in different ways that don't include food and to provide flexibility in the classrooms depending on the severity of the allergies. In addition, the majority of the Education Committee directed administration to review the language in the policy, to provide wording that will clarify the consent procedures for students with life-threatening food allergies who would like to be included in the celebrations. This includes the development of a consent form for students that would participate in celebrations that do include food. Because food allergies have increased in our schools and the need to inform parents and students has become more and more important, the Education Committee recommends that administration develop multiple ways to communicate information about the policy and regulation. So we don't like to make these recommendations with, well, I don't, without doing homework. So I had gone on to our website to see how easy it is to find these policies and regulations, and I put together a document that I'd like to, you know, we could share with administration on some, when comparing with other district websites, how they laid out and how they communicated. Because I know we have full, all policies on our website, but it was a little, it was hard, a little harder to find, and I sympathize. So I would like to provide that at the Education Committee meeting. So basically, there will be another look at the policy, and it's not, it's not in tonight's agenda at all. We're going to go back, and truly, this is an issue that I think our district will be facing over time, and you'll see that our world is changing. We have to reflect that in our policies. That's it. Any?
Thank you very much, Mrs. Ley. And now, Mr. Pulsifer for the Human Resources Committee.
Thank you very much. The Human Resources Committee met last Wednesday, June 19th. We actually had a short agenda, so I won't take as much time as Greg did. We started with review of policies and regulations 3160 and 4160. That's regarding physical examination, and the two numbers are because it applies to both teachers and support staff, and there are separate regulations for both. Primarily, this was an update to get us in line with current language for those policies and the regulations. But one change that we did have, which has come up at this board table a couple times, is we've added to the regulations that all... is we've added to the regulations that all prospective employees who have a, and I want to use the right language, a conditional offer of employment must undergo drug screening before they can come in. So, this is something that we've discussed a number of times we passed, as part of also our discussion with random drug testing, and it is, as, as most of you probably know, it's pretty common in the private sector. So, you know, I think this is part of us making sure we have the best quality of educators across the board coming and working in the district. So, both the regulation and the policy are on the agenda for first reading tonight. Our next agenda item was progress towards goals of our superintendent. Jordan discussed where he's at in terms of his merit goals. We expect to follow up with him on that and take committee action at our next meeting. The discussion of progress towards goals kind of morphed into a discussion of the timeline for our annual evaluations. So, we'll be getting the ball rolling on our annual evaluation for both the superintendent and the Board Secretary, and also the Board Self-Evaluation. So, we'll start that process up again. Hopefully, have that all done before the end of the summer, so we can have, hopefully get together sometime over the summer and discuss the results of the self eval. And I know Tom always likes to try and find a date for retreat, so we'll put that out as fodder for him to get a retreat going.
Always a joy.
There's always, it's always fun. And the final item was a, which is also on the action agenda tonight, is a revised job description for the turnkey technology teacher. As you're aware, we did this, this past year was our first go-around with this. So, given the wisdom of our experience in the past year, we've made some changes to the job description in terms of the expected work over the summer and during the school year for training and other items, including some of the online training that we provide for the teachers. But primarily, this was a change to reflect what we learned in the past year to make that job a more effective position for the district. And that was all we had that.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments on anybody's committee reports? Lorraine?
As Greg expected, I had a couple of questions. The first question had to do with the Sedexo contract. As I mentioned at a previous meeting, an issue that we have requested, or at least I have requested, that the, that the Education Committee address, is the use of POS monies that are provided by parents for things that do not meet our nutritional guidelines, like Gatorade cookies, chips, things like that. And I just want to make sure, before we approve the contract or anything like that, the menu, you know, the, the list that's in this, that's on the agenda for approval tonight, that are changing the POS, what the POS monies can be used for, which I think we are in dire need of, will not be affected by, or will not affect that contract or anything like that.
Well, a couple of things, and I, I'm going to look over to Iman, you can nod your head, like, no, you're wrong if I'm wrong. So, this is sort of like an automatic renewal, and the provisions of the contract are not open for negotiations at this time, is that? That's, that's correct. And this is, this is the last year?
Yes.
This is the last year of their contract? Then, we can have a new, you know, new bid after this school year. And the reason I say this, because I share your concerns also. And the school lunch prices, the point-of-sale items, all of those things are all sort of tied in to the bids we get when we, when we get these, you know, offers for, for this contract. So, Aramark's profits and the amount that they guarantee us and everything is all interrelated into what they can sell in their schools, as long as they follow the guidelines. So, I think in the, in a future contract, and I know this, you know, this might not be a lot of help for the upcoming year, but in a future contract, we could certainly have bid specs that prohibit using the money on the, you know, POS card, or whatever you call it, for certain items or things like that. Those are all, would be open for discussion, you know, next time around, but that's, I have a feeling that will definitely affect the prices that they're going to, that the bids we're going to get. They try to make their money, we have guarantee for our money, so do you understand what I'm saying, as far as that?
I do understand what you're saying.
Yeah. It's, it's a difficult situation.
You know, I'm not at all happy about it, because...
I understand.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, just a, for instance, and my daughter's going to kill me, but, you know, right the last day of school, I get this mealtime.com email saying, "Your daughter's account is now $12.50." So, I had just given her a check, and I was like, "I cannot believe," you know? So, I go in, she has spent $400 all year on things from Sedexo. Anybody who knows me knows that I immediately cut everything out for the whole year, pasted it into an Excel spreadsheet, color-coded it, and I am going to share it with the Education Committee as a point of information.
Absolutely.
Because I think it's incredible for me that 25%, she spent more than 25%, $100 of the $388 that she used this year was spent on items that do not meet our nutrition policy. $60 on Otis Spunk Meyer cookies, another $9 on chips, Little Debbie's. I mean, these are things that, you know, we're, we have spent countless hours, as Judy can attest to, talking about 30 potential cupcakes in the classroom, and this is all being blown away, and I have no say in it. If I put money in the POS, which we are all encouraged to do, she can use it for anything that they're selling. This is ridiculous. I mean, I think we're all in agreement, I don't, I think I'm preaching to the choir, but I do think that we need to be conscious of this in all of our contracts, and I, you know, I'm very disappointed if we won't be able to actually address that this year.
Well, we're sort of at the nexus, or the Bermuda Triangle maybe, of the federal nutrition school lunch policy, which apparently, you know, my daughter is in, was in eighth grade this year, she bought lunch every year, starting in first grade. This year, she went in, she doesn't buy lunch anymore, she didn't buy it this whole year. So, she's one of the 450 that, that didn't buy. So, is she going to buy something else, maybe? If she's hungry, or she didn't like what she packed, or whatever, you know? Absolutely, I, I think so. So, you know, so that's, that's definitely an element of it. More kids were eating their meal and enjoyed it and liked it, I don't think they would buy as much. I think we have seen an uptick, and if, if you remember, Iman, that I think Kathy did mention that they made up the sales that they lost in what they call reimbursable meals, which is the traditional standard school lunch, they made up those sales in the other items.
Otis Spunk Meyer cookies.
But they, they made up in those other items, but if there was, if there was the lunch that the kids enjoyed and, and liked to eat, they would have not sold as many. So, I don't think, so, two things, I don't think, I think you're on the right track, maybe selling any of those items wouldn't be good, but it would be much better to sell far fewer of them overall, and not use the POS card for them.
That is...
These are all things that we can, that we, we should certainly look into next time around, and see how that all plays into. The other thing is, we might get bids and say, "Look, we can do all this for you, but you'll need to raise your school lunch prices," so that we do get money back on the reimbursable, what they call the reimbursable meal, and we'll need to raise that considerably, so we'll have to look into all those things.
Right. And I think most parents would, would be fine with raising the reimbursable amount if it was something their kid would purchase and eat. I mean, I have no problem with my daughter buying the a la carte lunches, which I have heard are very good at the middle school and the high school, for $3.75, because it's something she will actually eat, rather than what she did when she was here, which was buy nachos and eat the chips and not the meat, because she didn't like the meat or the cheese. So, you know, I mean, I think there's a balance there that we can reach, but I think for sure, we need to address the use of the POS funds. Now, if they want to sell Otis Spunk Meyer cookies and chips, that's fine, but let the kids find money on the couch to buy it. I don't want them to use the money that I'm giving to the district, that I expect, and most parents do, is going to be used in a way that meets our nutrition policy. Okay, so that, that's...
I think we're pretty agreed, we'll see what we can do.
So, that's that. And the other second part, did you have more on that before I go on?
Well, only on that point is, in the elementary schools, they can only use their account for lunch.
Right.
So, it's only when they hit Otten Road that they can start spending their money on everything.
Right.
And, and parents do not know that, so, you know, and I don't know how many of them do what I do, which, I'm sure none of them make Excel spreadsheets from their mealtime.com data, but I'm sure a lot of them just use that, write a check and go, because their expectation is that they are using it for lunches. The next thing that I wanted to address was what you said about Joel saying that the wireless is incredibly slow.
Can you believe it?
I have heard that, but from many of the kids who have been part of the pilots, and then just in the high school, kids saying that, "Why bother to bring your own device because it's so slow." Is the $230,000 that he quoted, would that actually, what, is that for all three of the upper-level schools where the devices...
I think that was for all of the schools.
District-wide.
District-wide, everything.
I think that's a bargain, so, you know...
Yeah, it's just more money, though.
Yeah, it is, but I, it's definitely something, if we're going to go live with one-to-ones, absolutely.
There's some cost, I mean, they was able to get that price because the, someone is going to recycle the current access, whatever you call them, access points that are in, I think it's in every other classroom has one, because they can kind of get off it, get from it, from the other. So, they're going to recycle those, and part of this comes down to also future state requirements where there's going to be testing, I guess, at the high school and other levels, that will require everyone to be logged on at the same time. Now, granted, I probably won't be streaming video, but still, you know, everyone in the school, 1,200, 2,400 kids at the same time, we're going to need to, you know, try at least to get that, so, yeah.
Thank you.
I understand.
Okay, Ms. Haley?
I just have a comment about that, because to me, as I'm looking actually through the agenda, and I see we're approving more textbooks, when are we started, like, as a district, when are we going to start to look at the feasibility of, we're having, if we have the devices, and we're spending all this extra money for bandwidth, eliminating textbooks as the option, and, and going electronic? Because I have to think that what we're putting out for technology, and, you know, we're still kind of like behind a little bit with spending on textbooks, you know, it just doesn't seem to make sense to me.
All of the textbooks that now go through our approval process must have an online version. They're still, we're still in this very interesting stage where the publishers are basically charging us for books and giving us the online access for free, or charging us for online access and giving the books for free. Either way, it, there, there doesn't seem at this point to be a significant cost advantage today. We anticipate that there will be significant cost advantages moving forward. Apple came out with, and about a year ago, there was a lot of, a lot of discussion about thinking about online textbooks as you would disposables, that they are almost $14 per. But it doesn't stay with the child, or it doesn't, it, it can't be reused for another child, it's that child, and then, once they're finished with the course, it's like a workbook that is, that's consumed. So, what we have done in the interim, until the publishers kind of catch up with this, and we start to see significant cost decreases, is that whatever text we have and what the board approves, we ensure that there is an online component. Sometimes that is the textbook online with value-added videos and other, and other ways that enhance that experience for the kids. Sometimes it is a very interesting digital integration with assessments and all, all sorts of things, and that, that is part of, in some cases, some of our discussion at the Education Committee as we, as we move forward to approve the textbooks. But every textbook that we approve has an online component.
Thank you. Mrs. Ley?
I just wanted to add that it's also our understanding on the Education Committee, that if there is an online component, that when they have revisions, like in science and math, that would be updated annually. So, there's, there's another advantage for online.
Ms. Pulsifer?
A couple of points on that. First of all, while it's, what's encouraging that Apple may finally be seeing the light, it turns out that based on current licensing rules that most publishers are going by, it's actually more expensive to have a electronic textbook than it is to have the textbook that we hand over year after year after year. So, while we're behind, part of it is because the industry is behind, and we can't afford to get there until the industry does. Apple's policy has been, I don't know if they've actually finally instituted this sort of reusable yet, but their policy was that the book is assigned to the Apple ID, which means that when somebody takes U.S. History I this year, we pay for that book on the iPad or whatever, which won't be as expensive as the book would have been, but when that student moves on, we don't get to reuse that electronic copy. So, until they get, and until all of the publishers and the controlling agents like Apple, because they really dictate everything that goes to an iPad, until they get in line, we really won't be able to afford that. So, it sounds great, and it really is a great place to get to, but until they get on board, that really won't work. The other problem that we need to consider as, as a school board, is that if we make that decision, and, and I'm all for it, I'm obviously, as a technology person, I'm all for it, but one of the things we have to understand is that there is a presumption, if we do that, that students have access to, have access to reasonable bandwidth internet, not just at school, because these online supplements and everything else, they should be able to use at home when they're doing their homework or whatever, and have access to that. So, there's a presumption, if we go to only those forms, that every student has access to that. And I, I'm not sure we could say that about all the students and families in Hillsborough right now, so I think we have to be careful that, well, that's a great, I think there's so many great things we can do with that, we have to recognize where we're going to run up against some walls where we would actually be cheating some people by going that route. So, it's a great place to get to, we have to make sure we take, take care of all those issues along the way.
Ms. Dr. Wester?
And in fact, we did discuss this in the Education Committee, and where online texts are available, there are a portion of, of textbooks, for instance, there are textbooks that they're buying to just have in the class, and then, the students would be presumed to be able to access that at home, online, but they do buy extra copies for those children who do not have internet access at home. So, we are addressing it, and it's unfortunate that the data that's provided here doesn't actually show how many copies we're talking about and all of that information, but these are all things that we're, we are thinking about and trying to address with the administration as part of the Education Committee agenda when we approve these.
Judy. Mr. Gillette?
Thank you. So, I've been doing some thinking about this, about the technology and the textbooks, and, and doing a little bit of reading, and, and from what I understand, the use of technology is still, in this form, is still fairly new, or maybe a decade, or something like that. I think the, the jury is sort of still out on what it does for achievement. But I don't think it's any better or worse than standard textbooks, but, you know, so, it's just another tool, like textbooks were, and I, I think it's, I, I think it's, we're going in the right direction with it, certainly, I don't know what the result is going to be. But I was thinking about it the other day, and I was thinking, you know, I don't look back through the mists of time, 40 years back, and say, "Oh, my God, that was such a great textbook. I love that textbook." And I don't think a student 40 years from now is going to look back and say, "Wow, that website where I did that interactive science stuff, that was great." But I do look back, and I'm not just saying this because my mother was a teacher, but I do look back, and I remember great teachers that I had, and I still think the teaching, Dane, listen, because I'm talking about you, I still think the teaching is the most important part of it. Getting in front of a great teacher who's engaging and can engage you in the subject is going to trump the textbooks or the technology, and, you know, whatever we can do to ensure that we've got those great teachers, and I think we do, in this district, and, and maybe there's some way to teach kids how they're supposed to interact with the teachers, maybe for, way for them to get more out of it, I don't know. But I, I still think that, that trumps this, trumps the textbooks or the technology, and so, I don't know. I just wanted to say that, because I've been thinking about it, and since it came up, I figured I'd get on my soapbox and talk a little bit.
I like what you said.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mr. Gillette. Mr. Pulsifer?
I agree with you 100%, minus a little, Greg, because I think the problem we face today, you're right, if, if you have a, a good teacher who's engaging the students, then that is by far the best thing you can do. But the critical word there, or one of the critical words, is engaging. And the problem is that textbooks, as they currently stand, do zero or negative engaging. And, and the problem that teachers have is that in, in their attempts to engage the students, what are they combating? They're combating iPods, iPads, Xboxes, PS, I don't know what number they're on now, because I'm too old, four, PS4s. So, while I would agree 100% that having a quality teacher is the most important thing, if we don't give them the right weapons against those games... if we don't give them the right weapons against those games, I think it's hard to be engaging when they can't compete in the same, in the same way that kids, their students view the world, and our children view the world as a digital wonderland. And so it's hard to be an engaging teacher in a digital wonderland with a 500-page bazillion-pound printed book. So I think it's, you're right, the teachers make the most difference, but if we don't give them the right tools to combat what the students are living in, we shortchange their opportunity to present to the kids.
Very nicely put.
Thank you.
Now, let's go on to the Action Agenda.
Yeah, would anybody else like wax philosophical here, or can we move on to the rest of the agenda?
We can't leave before 8:30. We wouldn't know what to do with ourselves.
Come on, what are we gonna do? Go home, my kids aren't in bed yet, it's the summer. Let's go, keep going.
We're out of here by nine.
I'm with you. We have to go to work tonight.
Are there any other comments on committee reports? Okay, we move on to the Action Agenda, through which I will turn over to Dr. Schiff.
Thank you, Madam President. I ask for the Board's consideration of the following motions under the area of education to approve professional and travel-related expenses. The HIB investigation list, approve the disposal of the textbook as listed, approve curriculum pacing review activities, as well as the textbooks as reported out of committee, and approve the novel as listed. Approve the following teacher for ELL Summer Enrichment Program, field trip destination to dinosaurs in Secaucus, New Jersey, approve summer PD Institute, the 2013 staff list, approve the Common Assessment Development as listed, approve curriculum writing as listed, approve the mandatory training for the Common Assessment developers, approve summer work, approve the submission for the ESEA NCLB fiscal year 2014 and acceptance of the fiscal year 2014 ESEA NCLB program plan application and funds, approve the regulations that are required for adoption by the Board of Education, including special education regulations as listed and the attendance regulation. Approve the district self-assessment as Mr. Whitlock presented during his presentation. Approve the changes in out-of-district placement, and approve the submission of the fiscal year 2014 IDEA grant application.
All right. May I have a motion for items A1 through A18, please?
On behalf of the Education Committee, I recommend that the full board approve items A1 through A18.
Thank you very much. May I have a second?
Second.
Lorraine, any comments or questions?
I just have a thought.
How dare you?
I just want to say that I am very pleased that the dinosaur is back on.
Dinosaur's on? Is it on? Dinosaur's in cupcake.
But it's good that it's on.
Yeah, it's good that it's on.
It would be happy.
Okay.
Are you going?
Any other questions or comments? May I have a roll call?
Sure.
Hey, 18 items, let's go for it.
Ms. Bogachewski?
Yes.
Ms. Santa Fonte?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mrs. Pulsifer? Yes. And Ms. Swanson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I ask for the Board's consideration of the following motions that I'm recommending to the full board under the area of Human Resources to approve the revised policies for first reading that was reported by Mr. Pulsifer out of committee, the physical examinations for both staff members and support staff, approve regulations requiring adoption by the Board of Education, and those are the associated regulations to those policies, approve the resolutions as listed to abolishing a personal nurse position that's no longer needed and creating instructional system position, which is needed, approve the following resignations as listed, transfers and change in assignments for next school year, approve appointments of teachers, substitutes, and approve the revision to summer work hours, approve middle school and high school coaches for 2013-2014, approve the revised extended school year program, and approve the revised job description as reported by Mr. Pulsifer out of committee.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to approve the Human Resources Agenda, items B1 through B9?
On behalf of the Human Resources Committee, I move that the board approve those items as listed in the agenda.
Thank you very much. May I have a second?
Second.
Deanna?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or discussion on any of these items?
I just need to separate out B4.
Speak into the microphone, please.
I just need to separate out B4.
B4? Before what?
B4.
Yes, I know. Okay.
You sucked my battleship.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, so we'll be voting on B1 through 3 and B5 through 9. Roll call.
Ms. Bogachewski?
Yes.
Ms. Santa Fonte?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mrs. Pulsifer? Yes. Mrs. Swanson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And may I have a motion for item B4?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call on B4.
Okay, Ms. Bogachewski?
Yes.
Ms. Santa Fonte?
Abstain.
Okay. Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Abstain.
Okay. Mr. Pulsifer? Yes. And Ms. Swanson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you very much.
I ask for the Board's consideration of the following motions under the area of operations to approve the monthly financials, line item transfers, monthly bills lists, awarding of transportation items as listed, approve state contract purchasing, approve the renewal for the garbage disposal service services, approve the food services management renewal as reported out of committee by Mr. Gillette, approve the cafeteria à la carte price list, approve the Sterling High School shared services agreement, approve cooperative purchasing with Somerset County Library System, approve the request for local taxes from Hillsborough Township and Millstone Borough, and approve capital reserve transfer, approve resolution for participation in coordinated transportation services with Monmouth Ocean County Educational Services Commission, approve the Architect of Record and award 2013 summer ESY transportation contracts as listed. And there's many of them. And approve the extension of the ERMR Custodial Maintenance Management Contract and approve the sidebar agreement with the HEA.
Okay, may I have a motion for the operation? Yeah.
On behalf of the Grand and Glorious Operations, on behalf of the Grand and Glorious Operations Committee, I humbly request approval of all of those items Dr. Schiff just talked about.
You can always tell when school's out around here. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Jim. So we'll be voting on items, oh, any questions or comments on the agenda? Yes?
Minor, minor. It's just a technicality, because a few months ago, we approved of, well, we were asked to approve a paint job with only one quote, and it said it was the low bid, and it's happening again, it says, in C4, so in C4, it's only one quote, and it says it's the low quote again. So I don't know if that's just standard language, but it's really not, because it's the only.
Oh, I see, on the, these are the, for the bus?
Yeah, because see, that was, you know, that's when I picked up on the paint, the paint job.
On the, and I'll ask Mr. Mahmood if this is typical, on the small route, like, a couple of student-only bus contracts, it's not atypical, is it, to only have one bidder? What has been your experience with these, with these type of, these type of routes?
The, you're right, Mr. Gillette, with the smaller routes, it is hard to get more of a competitive edge. The district did follow all public procurement procedures in that we went out competitively. In this case, only one person bid, and it is hard to obtain bids for these smaller-type routes. So this is, it's not like it's a very big route or a normal transportation route, which we would obviously throw out the bid, I think, if it was small as this, but these routes are pretty small, and it's very typical, not a lot of vendors make a lot of money off these small routes, so they're not as advantageous to vendors to bid on as the bigger routes.
Is this within the normal range that we would expect this to come in at?
Yeah, this is actually pretty decent for the board. $294 to go to Shepherd High School is actually a very reasonable price.
Where is Shepherd High, where is that, Deanna?
I think it's north, right, Jerry?
Morris County?
I believe it's north, Jerry, I don't know for a fact.
Oh, okay. I know when I see one thing, I also like to see more, but I don't, I don't think it's atypical for, this is a very small, like, this is probably only just a couple of students, or maybe only one student that picks up in this town. One student, one of our students, and so a bus has to come here, and maybe try to get other students from other towns and take this route, it's not.
And I believe, Ms. Lee, this is, I believe this is received on June 11th for the remaining portion of June, so this wasn't necessarily for the next school year.
I actually wasn't, I was thinking about our process where, if we only get one bid, why do we say it's the low bid? Because actually, when, that last time, that was an extremely high cost for the painting, and that's where it can be, it's hard for us to follow as board members, you know, that's why.
Then we just go back out to bid, correct?
Well, I think.
On things like that, when we had the painting, if it comes back at such an enormous amount.
Is this after the fact, for a few days that have already been done?
Yes.
Okay. It's for a few days that have already, this is after the fact for a couple of weeks already? All right, I understand what you're saying. You're just going with the process, you don't care about this one, it's just the process.
If I may say that, you know, in this particular case, I think it was because of a switch of assignment, the particular student went to a different school, but I think in other cases, we have been really good with combining routes with not only our students, but with students from other districts in joint transportation agreements, which we can do when we have the whole summer to work on it, and we know where all of our students are going, and then we could work with other districts and get several kids on the same bus.
Are you talking, Mrs. Lee, you're talking more generally about if we would have a general policy to try not to award bids where we've only received one bid, because it's impossible for the board to know if that's a good bid?
I'm just, I'm just asking not to put the adjective "low" quote, because, you know, in the case of that painting job, it was not a low quote, and so.
Low quote doesn't mean that it's a low quote. Low quote means it's the low quote of the quotes received. Now, I realize it's splitting words, but that is 100% accurate, to call it the low quote. It's just kind of pointless when there's only one, but it is, low quote doesn't mean that this is a good price. Low quote means, according to the bidding rules, this is the, the low quote of the quotes received, which in fact, even that paint job was. The paint job was the low quote. The other thing to bear in mind, I think, and I think would apply to this one, which is different from the paint job, is there are certain things we're obligated to do, where we don't have the freedom to say, "You know what, I don't like the quote, I'm gonna retry six months later," and my guess is, this is individual students, probably a placement, we're obligated to provide that, and we're obligated to provide it now, not later when we get a better bid. So we should look to do better on those, but we also have to recognize, there are times when we just don't have a choice, we have to do, and we have to do now, so we take what we get.
Thank you for that. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, where were we? Vote on C1 through C17. Roll call.
Ms. Bogachewski?
Yes.
Ms. Santa Fonte?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer? Yes. Ms. Swanson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, we are now up to old business. Is there any old business from the public? If you have any comments to make, this is your time.
This is your chance. Anyone? Last chance for the public to speak, right?
Anybody from the public want to speak? Would you like to step up to the microphone, state your name and location?
Hi, my name is Catherine Chen, and, can you hear me?
Speak closer to the microphone.
Hello?
Hannah.
Okay. Hi, my name is Catherine Chen, I'm 17, I'm soon to be a senior at Hillsborough High School, and I'm here today to talk about my Gold Award project, which I have titled, Can You Hear the Whispers? And the inspiration for this comes from my personal experience growing up, because I was born with minor to moderate hearing loss, and if you're not really sure what that means, that was kind of the reason why I decided to do this project. So I found that it's kind of difficult to explain to people, a lot of times, why I have to ask someone to repeat something over and over, or to have them understand what it means to be hearing impaired and what that's like. And so I realized, like, I'm not the only person who's like this, there are other kids who are also hearing impaired, so I made it the goal of my Gold Award project to raise and spread awareness of hearing and hearing loss. And to do this, I worked with Mrs. Nicholas, who is Hillsborough School District's Teacher of the Deaf, and we visited Mrs. Mullins' 4th grade class at Sunnymead Elementary School, and we worked with them to create a video presentation which talks about and explains sound and hearing and hearing loss. So this final video was created and presented by the 4th grade students. And starting next year, Mrs. Nicholas is gonna be using this video as she visits other elementary schools to teach them about hearing and hearing loss and explain to them what that's like. So we're choosing to start from a younger age, so we can start to, we can begin from the start to explain to them that people with hearing loss aren't really any different from anyone else, and our hope is to be able to spread this throughout all the Hillsborough elementary schools, and I hope that will have everyone's support and the support of the schools as we try to do this. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good job.
Is there any other old business? Any old business from the board?
Nah, wait. I'm kidding, I don't know what's in.
Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.